Our first public comment of any items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. Verification and posting of the agenda.
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on December 1st between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you, Pam. Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second?
Is it not working?
No.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Consideration possible action, approval of the minutes for November 2nd and November 8th, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting held on November 2nd, 2023, and November 8th, 2023, special meeting.
So can I?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of November 2nd and November 8th of 2023. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. We will move to our appointments. Our first appointment is consideration possible action, adoption of administrative order 2-2023, appointing Anthony Tisdale as Justice of the Peace pro tem. Judge.
Okay.
There you go.
Different, you had wires last time I was here. Thank you and good morning, Board. For the record, Ben Trotter, Justice of the Peace. I'm asking for the Board to approve Anthony Tisdale as a Justice of the Peace pro tem. NRS 4.032 imposes a duty on the Board of Commissioners to select a number of persons it determines appropriate to comprise a panel of substitute justices of the peace. Any member of the panel may be selected by the Justice of the Peace to replace him when he's not qualified or, in some cases, unavailable. Specifically for disqualification in certain cases where I may not have too much information. Currently, Stu Richardson is the only Justice of the Peace pro tem. And Anthony actually came to me a few weeks ago and expressed interest in doing this. And he's a resident of Fallon, been here for, I don't know how many years, I've known him for 20 something years since he came through the Fallon Police Department Explorer Program. He graduated UNR with a bachelor's degree and graduated from the law school at Brigham Young University, obviously highly qualified for it. He's also one of the most honest, impartial, upstanding, and well-rounded individuals that I know. And when he expressed his interest in this, I was certainly emphatic to give him an opportunity to do this. So this does require approval from the Board of Commissioners, and so I'm just asking the Board to consider this and approve him. It really does not have a specific fiscal impact because it really depends on my availability or what cases come before me. If I, as it currently is, I would either use Stu Richardson or I would hire a senior judge, retired Justice of the Peace, to come sit on cases, and that has happened a few times. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Tisdale would love to have been here. He flies what he calls fat planes for FedEx. He also is a fighter pilot in the Air National Guard for Nevada. And he is currently flying for FedEx today. And he was going to be on the next meeting this month, too. So he wishes he could be here. Any questions?
He's a good young man. Any questions or comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Anthony Tisdale as Justice of the Peace pro tem. Or?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Anthony Tisdale as Justice of the Peace pro tem. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you, and happy holidays to you.
Our next item is consideration possible action. A zone change application filed by Philip and Tanya Case for property located at 52 and E1 zoning districts whereby the applicants proposed to change the parcel to E1 zoning except for the driveway in order to replace the existing home with a larger residence, which would not be permitted in a C2 zoning where the home is located.
Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Chris Bros, Churchill County Public Works Planning and Zoning. I had a nice little description prepared for y'all, but the Chairman took care of all that already with the entire description. So this is a, Chris Bros again for the record, Churchill County Public Works Planning and Zoning. So the item in front of you today is the approval and acceptance of a sending site. This sending site is located at 1579 and 1750 Cushman Road and one more property. Those APNs are 006-851-18, 006-851-83, and 006-851-85. Those are 168.14 acres and has 138.41 acres of water rights. This item was seen and recommended for approval by the sending site committee, both for the acceptance of the application as well as the 222 transfer of development rights. This was then moved to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed the application and subsequently also recommended that this sending site application and the 222 development rights be approved. And this item is now in front of this commission and is requesting for approval on the sending site application for the property as well as approval of the 222 transfer of development rights. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris? Or comments? Then I will entertain a motion. You want both A and B?
Please, yes. They're two separate motions.
I move to approve the sending site application for Ray J. Cutino Family Trust on property at 1579 and 1750 Cushman Road and other property APN 006-851-18, 006-851-83, and 006-851-85, consisting of 168.14 acres, based on providing the community benefits of protecting nearby military operations and preserving 138.41 acres of farmland with surface water rights. And B, approve 222 transfer development rights, TDRs, for the same property.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to do just what he said. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And we have some guests with us, Varlin and Vincent, representing NACO. Come on up, gentlemen.
It feels strange sitting down here, I feel like I'm looking out from under my neck. I carry a couple of hats, one of them being President of our NACO.
State your name first.
Oh, Commissioner Varlin Higbee, Lincoln County, Nevada, and also representative for our Nevada Association of Counties. I wear several hats, one of them being our president this year for our Association of Counties. It was a pleasure having you at ELCO and appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's a privilege and an honor to serve as your president this year, and it's been an educational and enjoyment and a pleasure crisscrossing the state, going to the different boards. I made a promise when I took over as president that I would attend every Board of County Commissioners in the state of Nevada, and I got two left, ELCO and Clark. So almost there. The other thing is our national. I represent Nevada on the National Board of Directors, and it's been an honor and a privilege of serving there, and I hope to continue. There are a lot of things going on on our national level that we don't see, and Vince can explain a little bit of them later. And the other thing I want to do here today is, which is on your agenda, is the historical right of way, the RS2477s. I know we've worked on this several times, but a little history and a little background to this, it started in 20 years ago with Colorado tried to get this passed, and they didn't get it done. Wyoming was next, they tried it twice, didn't get it done. Utah's tried it twice, and now we're going to make a run at it as Nevada. And we've got an interesting situation here because what has happened is they passed, Congress passed these funding bills to literally bring rural America up to the standard of living of our urban counterparts. Well, what I noticed when we started applying for the grants and the things to do that, the 5G and our, you know, and when I go back to the national, on the national level, I talked to them, I tried to explain to them that there's places in Nevada that are still running off diesel generators. We don't have electricity. How are we going to get 5G and communications into some of these sites in Nevada, these places where people live? When we don't have infrastructure and we can't get to it. And the only way we're going to get to it is by using our county roads. If we can put our infrastructure in our county roads, well, they don't belong to us. And I found something out just about a month ago, we're working with the state highway to try to get some roads redone in up 93 and 317 and one other one in Lincoln County. The state don't even own their right of ways. The individual I was talking to, Mr. Gomez, the director out of Las Vegas, he said it's going to cost as much to do the environmental work on about 12 miles of road to be rebuilt and repaved. It'll cost us just as much to do the environmental work on that road as it will to be to build it. Like, why? Well, we don't own it. Well, it says right of way on there. Well, it's not a right of way. We think we have right of ways and we don't. And so what this bill does, it makes it possible for government entities, instead of having to go file, literally file with the district court, a federal court, and sue the federal government to get a title to your road. Instead of doing that, if this bill passes Congress, we can push it through, this conceptual bill, I should say, because it don't even have a number, it hasn't been introduced. If we can get this done, it will allow counties, states, or government municipalities to go to the local district office of your BLM and your Forest Service and get a quiet title. You still have to prove that it existed before 1976, but you can take your information, which I think most of the counties here in Nevada have already done. It started with Lorraine Wickman 15 years ago, right after Dick Carver and them about went to jail for opening up a road. And you know, there's still problems across the state. Jar Bridge, they're still, ELCO County's still fighting over Jar Bridge, and they've spent over $300,000. So there's no way that counties can afford to go sue the federal government to get these roads. But if we can get this bill passed, it will allow local governments to go file a quiet title and prove that they existed before 1976, the documentation that we've put together, and we can get a quiet title. Unless, you know, I'm sure there's going to be a process of protest. If they get a whole bunch of protests, it might tie it up in litigation, but it wouldn't tie it up with the county's litigation. Whoever is litigating is going to be suing the federal government because of the decision they made, not the county. So that's a plus. Any questions?
Vincent, did you have anything to say?
I don't, I don't. Mine's working, huh? I'll just introduce myself.
I'll push the button in front of you there.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, I don't have anything to add on the resolution, really. I'll make a couple of plugs on the NACO end. I think the resolution is in front of you, so, sorry, the resolution is in front of you, so if you have questions, we're happy to answer them. I think from the NACO perspective, I just wanted to mention a couple things. I do serve as the Executive Director, I think I've met all of you. I want to thank Churchill County and this Board's decision to participate in the National Public Land Center. The National Public Land Center for Public Lands Counties was a national initiative. The state associations are sort of tasked with collecting those voluntary contributions as a result of the LACTF funds that came to counties across the nation, actually. But this is sort of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to create this center and really give that local community on-the-ground voice to our public lands decisions and research and all of the lobbying effort and supplement a lot of the lobbying efforts that our National Association does. So I want to thank you all for that. I also want to thank you for your membership in NACO. We turn 100 years old next year, so in about three weeks, and I'm excited for the future of NACO, and I'm glad that you're all a part of it. Other than that, happy to answer questions on the resolution. I do want to make, since Commissioner Higbee mentioned his role in the National Association of Counties, I'll make one plug for the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference, which takes place in February of 2024. It's the 9th through the 12th this year. Congress will be in session, and we plan on hosting some Nevada-specific events with our delegation and others. So if you're there, if you have questions about registering, please reach out to us. Happy to help in any way we can, and again, appreciate the relationship we have with Churchill County, and happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Vincent or Varlin?
Is this for county roads or would it be city roads, the ones that were built in 1970 because they haven't been paved since?
It actually applies to anything that you can prove that is built before 1976. When they passed FLIPMA, FLIPMA is actually the bill that put it on hold. It was a mining law that come out of the 1800s, and they pulled it up to and included it in FLIPMA. Only, they don't recognize that you already have the right to the road, which RS2477, the mining bill, did. It recognized that if you had a mining claim, private property, whatever it is, that you needed to cross public lands, you had that right to build that, and it belonged to the county or the individual. And FLIPMA basically said, no, now to do that, you have to go through the federal courts.
Did Ed answer your question? Okay. Any other questions? I support this bill. I really believe that it's needed and it gives a little bit more strength to the counties. And I appreciate that. I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Churchill County Resolution 30-2023 in support of the Historic Routes Preservation Act.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the Churchill County Resolution 30-2023 in support of the Historic Routes Preservation Act. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Our senators, this was something I left out, they basically said that if we can get 100% of the counties to support this out of Nevada, that they will introduce it. And that's why I've pushed so hard to go from county to county to make sure this gets done, so we're down to.
Do you have 100% so far?
All but one. Clark, the main one. I got to have Clark. Yeah. And I'm having trouble getting on their agenda, but that's another discussion.
Okay. All right.
I'll get there.
Thank you.
I'll get there. Thank you.
Consideration possible action, presentation by, will you please say your name?
For the record, Kevin Kogle, Crescendo Consulting Group.
Crescendo. Crescendo Churchill County Social Services, 2023, Community Needs Assessment. Shannon, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. For the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. As you know, it's required by the Community Services Act federally that we complete a community assessment every five years, and this goes into our strategic plan. This supports our designation as a community action agency for Churchill County. This year, we partnered with NCAA, and I want to recognize Vivian Ruse, she's the Director of NCAA, is present today. They provided the payment for this so that we could get this completed. This is a little different than a community assessment we've done in the past. We wanted to encompass everything within Churchill County because the next step will go to a strategic planning process. And as we know, social services in the county have changed a lot over the last five years. So with that, I'm going to introduce Kevin Kogle with Crescendo. He is a Research Manager for the agency and the lead on this project.
Excellent. Again, Kevin Kogle, Crescendo Consulting Group. Thank you all for inviting me back to visit you here in Churchill County. Last time we were here in September, it wasn't quite as cold. Coming to visit you from Tucson, it's not exactly what I'm used to, but I welcome feeling that Christmasy holiday feeling. And we could go to the next slide. Thank you. So as Shannon mentioned, the goals of this assessment really are to assess county needs at that broad county level, but then to bring focus on the work of social services. And what you'll see here is a combination of sort of broader needs and then focus on priorities that really have to do with meeting the needs of the most vulnerable, the underserved individuals and families across the county, as well as to meet the needs of a community action agency and to ensure that Churchill County can continue to access federal funding to support the work of social services. So we employ a three-stage process. Our first stage really has to do with leveraging existing information, making use of data that's already out there to help understand who lives in Churchill County. And then the second stage of the process is really, I feel, the true value add of engaging in these assessments. It's going out and actually talking to people and gathering information directly from folks across the community. So the ways that we do that include an access audit, which is sort of like mystery shopper calls. We identify community resources that folks might seek to access information or schedule appointments, things like that, and we really try to simulate that experience. What does it look like to call and try to access resources that exist in the community? We do one-on-one interviews, focus group discussions, and also employ a community survey to try to get both depth of information as well as to hear from as many folks who are willing to offer their thoughts and opinions as possible. And finally, the third stage of our process is a needs prioritization. So while we identify a list of needs as we've analyzed the information that we've gathered, we don't then sit down and say, okay, here's what you need to do. We work with folks in the community, in this case, a leadership group identified for us by social services with representation from across various sectors in the community. And we facilitate a needs prioritization process, asking those folks to think about not just importance of different identified needs, but also what's within social services control, what kind of timeframes would it take to really move the needle and make an impact. And so that's sort of the landing point for this assessment process. So for this particular assessment, we did the secondary research that I described, also completed 30 interviews, seven focus group discussions, had almost 130 survey responses, and we completed those mystery shopper calls, and then brought all of that information together in the form of 24 identified needs, and then worked through that facilitated prioritization process, landing with 17 higher priority needs across seven categories. And that's really what I'm going to be presenting to y'all today. And so each of these categories, I apologize that these quotes are a little bit small, but each of these categories includes several, in most cases, several specific needs that are the needs that the leadership group considered and selected for prioritization. So the first need category has to do with augmenting transportation options, including both county-wide transportation as well as linking folks to the resources that they need to access outside of Churchill County. One thing I was going to preface several of these need categories with is the idea that it's, many of these challenges, working at the national level, are challenges that we hear about a lot. And so really what we've tried to do here is not just present these as sort of, these are issues that are universal, that are affecting everybody across the country, but really identify what are the specific ways that Churchill County can work to address the specific challenges that folks here are facing. So in terms of improving transportation within the counties, certainly, cart is a great resource, but one thing we hear very frequently is that there's more that folks could use, not just to getting to and from places, but actually getting to and from public transit. And we heard, you know, the idea that if we want to go to the general candy dance, it's not just getting dropped off at the bottom of the hill, it's we need to be able to actually get up to the event that we're trying to get to and access that resource or that event. Similarly, the idea of, you know, getting to Reno or getting to Carson for shopping, for medical appointments, all those kinds of things. It's important that the folks aren't entirely reliant on their friends or on whoever is willing to take them, you know, make several trips a week, taking folks to and from appointments. So certainly, there's opportunity to improve those types of resources. Housing is another thing we hear about a lot, and I know that you all hear about and think about a lot as well. In this instance, the specific needs that were prioritized have to do with assisting family, community members who are currently struggling, including increasing the availability of low-income housing for folks who are really facing housing instability or homelessness, as well as providing some community education on some of the programming that does exist or may exist. Increasing accommodation of some of the specific needs that folks have that often serve as barriers to housing and housing programs, things like pets or other needs that folks, that may seem sort of trivial, but that ultimately do impact whether folks can access those kinds of resources. And finally, services that address acute homelessness, and specifically those that provide services for males and females separately. I'll sort of provide a high-level summary of some of these data points that you'll see here, and I encourage you all to revisit these in the full report. There's a plethora of data in there that I think inform each of these areas. So looking at cost burden, in this instance, you know, Churchill County actually measures up relatively positively when we look at Churchill County is that purple bar on the left, and then Nevada is the green bar, the US is the blue bar. Looking at cost burden when it comes to housing, meaning folks who spend 30% or more of their income on housing expenses. So looking at homeowners who are cost burdened, while Churchill County measures up favorably, it's still, we're still talking about one in five homeowners who are experiencing that challenge. Similarly, two in five renters experiencing that kind of challenge. On the right, you'll see the responses to our community survey. These are the highest priority issues that folks said need more, much more or more, as far as services in the community. As you can see, affordable housing comes at the top of that list, but also help finding resources related to housing is third from the top, and help paying rent or mortgage is also in the top 10 with three in five respondents indicating that is in need of more. And again, a couple quotes, I encourage you, I'm not going to read through all of these quotes here today, but just often what we find is when folks speak to their challenges, they really weave together some of these different areas that I'm presenting to you as sort of distinct challenges today, talking about housing and transportation or livable wage jobs. But really, those are interconnected, and that's something that I think does shine through in some of the quotes that we've captured and featured in this report. Another need category is childcare. Again, this is one that we hear about across the country, the lack of availability and also the costs associated with childcare. The specific needs we've presented include the need for affordable childcare, including families who might not be in the lowest threshold income-wise, but who might fall just beyond those eligibility criteria for certain types of childcare assistance or programming. And another thing we hear about a lot is the availability of childcare for folks who don't work a nine-to-five, Monday-to-Friday work schedule. So expanding those types of offerings are two needs that were identified here. And I've just highlighted, one of the tables you'll find in this report presents estimated living wage annual expenses for Churchill County by different types of household composition. And what you'll see there is just that childcare does, you know, often comprise a very significant portion of the required income in each of these cases, and this isn't sort of taking into account what people actually make in their job. And this isn't sort of taking into account what people actually make in their job. So, you know, if folks are making less than that last row of this table, that means that their childcare costs would potentially be either a much more outsized percentage of their overall cost of living, or they might be forced to make sacrifices when it comes to some of these other categories of expenses. Talking about local healthcare options, certainly the need for additional primary care providers as well as specialty care. We talked about folks going to Reno or Carson for medical appointments. That's certainly something we heard a lot about. So realizing that, especially within aging population nationally as well as locally, these are going to be continual challenges, and so there's a need to continue to explore different ways to attract these types of resources to the community. So I mentioned the aging population. What you see here is just a very simple graphic displaying the age composition of the US, Nevada, and Churchill County on the bottom row, or the bottom of this graphic. The blue bar to the right side shows that the 65-plus population in Churchill County is a bit greater than it is in those other places. And we know that the populations across the country are continuing to age and that there are continued needs associated with meeting the needs of an aging population. So those include housing. Again, there's some overlap here with some of the other needs we've identified, but specifically with seniors, ensuring that there are those specific types of housing and care that are needed, including independent living, but also assisted living, memory care, as well as in-home healthcare for older adults. So just ensuring that as the population continues to age, that those types of resources exist in ways that meet the needs of that group. On the flip side, talking about youth services and needs affecting the youth in the community. One need that we identified has to do with the pervasiveness of behavioral health issues. You'll see on both the mental health side as well as looking at different substance use issues, that those are continued challenges both at the national, state, and local levels. This graphic here is displaying Churchill County School District with a variety of mental health and behavioral health conditions. That's the lighter pink bar. And then the Nevada-level values are the darker purple bar. So what you can see here is both that in some cases, regardless of which group you're looking at, which geography, the pervasiveness of many of these issues is higher than I would have expected. Certainly, this is something that we see at the national level. But also that there are areas where Churchill County has higher values or more children and youth who are being affected by anxiety, depression, and more severe and acute conditions in the behavioral health space. So ensuring that there are resources available to address those needs. The other thing that we included here is improving the accessibility and availability of activities for children and youth. So not just adding new things, but ensuring that the resources that do exist, programs that are available, are available to all. Again, bringing this back to a focus on vulnerable groups, people who are living in lower-income households, ensuring that these types of resources are available across the communities of the county.
Are our numbers going up as far as suicide rates? Are our numbers going up on that?
For the record, Shannon Ernst, yes, we are seeing an uptrend with attempts at suicide. One of the things is we have partnered with the State OFI Office to receive those reports every month. We're looking at, actually, and we'll be talking about this afternoon in the tours, about doing a behavioral health suicide prevention plan with the different interventions that we have and we need in our community.
Thank you. And so finally, the last category of need we've identified has to do with behavioral health and ensuring that there are in-person behavioral health providers and services available across different types of insurance that folks might have. And certainly, this is an issue that affects folks across the community. We talked about children and youth. I know in engaging with the Naval Air Station, this is another issue that they brought to our attention, as well as far as being able to refer folks to resources locally, having some of the same types of challenges in accessing these types of services locally versus sending folks out to Reno or Carson. So again, an area of need that affects folks across different age groups and demographics, but one that we heard about specifically in this assessment as well. And so the next steps for this, in presenting these assessments and the findings, often it's a little bit unsatisfying because we've talked about a lot of challenges and we've talked about, you know, some specific priorities. And the next step really is planning for action. Shannon mentioned engaging in strategic planning, and that's really the next step for this type of product. We hope that you use this report as a resource. We hope it provides some insight into the different challenges that folks spoke to in our conversations with them. And then the next step really is seeking to address these challenges in your community in the coming years. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Shannon Ernst, again, I just want to note, we had amazing partners come to the table for these groups. Even NAS Fallon hosted Kevin and his team out to do a focus group. But the leadership teams, we had Banner at the table, Churchill Community Coalition, the Central Nevada Health District, the Fallon-Payute-Chashoni Tribe, New Frontier Behavioral Health Center, NACO, Churchill County School District, and Oasis. So when you really look at bringing all of those great minds around a table to address not only what has come from the community, but to also provide further input on what they're seeing with their organizations, this makes a very nice report. One of the things, yes, we have a lot of challenges, but we also have a lot of opportunity. And so as we go through our strategic planning, I think this will be very useful, but also it's helped us identify where we're missing some data and where there's some gaps in some information. And so this afternoon, I'll be talking about a behavioral health plan that we are really looking at doing and partnering with the school district on. We're working on the opioid assessment, which is required by the state to complete for us to access more funding and as part of our settlement agreements, but it also can help us look into the future, what other resources we need.
Have any questions for either of these two folks or comments? You know, you had on your list civic and food, but you didn't really address those. Could you go back and talk about, because, and the reason I'm asking about food is because for a long time, the senior center has a food distribution. You know, they send out lunches every day. So I was just wondering, do we need to expand that or what?
That's a great point. Thank you, Kevin Kogel. So one of the challenges in doing these kinds of assessments is there are some cases where there are basic needs that we identify and ask folks about, and what we hear is that the need exists, but it's being met, if that makes sense. So in terms of whether it needs to be expanded, that's not something that really came through as consistently in this assessment as some of the other topics that we presented. One of the needs that we included in the broader list that didn't make it onto the higher priority list that I presented here was the need for more affordable grocery and retail options. And the reason it didn't make it onto this high priority list was the group decided it wasn't as within the scope of what social services does. That doesn't mean it's not a need for the community, but that it's not, expanding retail is not necessarily a need that social services is poised to act on. But to come back to that food issue, I would say what we heard most consistently was that certainly food and emergency food, those types of resources are needed, but that expanding them is not as high a priority as expanding in some of the other topic areas that we presented today.
Are we looking at, I know I was fairly close to the school district for a while, but are we looking at, and we had a lot of young people who were homeless. Do we need to find some sources for food for those young people?
Shannon Ernst, so that is the Youth and Transition Program through the Churchill County School District that works with our homeless youth. One of the things is we have several food pantries within our community, plus, of course, they can always access. We are not just a senior center, we're a life center, and so we make food available to those that need. As we move forward to strategic planning, absolutely, we'll be diving into these different areas. This today was just identifying those needs as a community. But definitely, we will be taking each piece of this for the strategic plan, coming up with outcomes, and truly who would be responsible for that outcome. It may not be directly social services, but as we've done previously with Out of Egypt and other programs, we've helped support those so that they could expand to meet those additional needs, or we may need to provide it directly to fill that gap. So this is like stage one of the big picture, and this afternoon through the tour, we're going to have a little more discussion because there's things that we have identified within social services that we know we need to look at expanding, but how do we build the capacity to do that? And so we'll be diving into those this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just add, on the school district question, for your reference, that because of the poverty level, the school district is completely free lunches throughout the school district, because our poverty level is at, I think it's got to be over 60% or something like that. So all the child nutrition programs at the school are automatic, the kids that are enrolled in the school district are free meals. So, and I believe that's two meals a day.
Shannon, do you know how many homeless youths we have currently in Churchill County? Like a rough, last time I heard it was like 150 or so, around that?
So that's our overall population of homeless. So when we look at the homeless youth, and it's a very different definition. So when you look at adults, literally homeless is you cannot be couch surfing, you have to be literally on the streets to be considered homeless. When you go into McKinney-Vento, for the youth, it is if you are couch surfing, if you are doubled up in other households, those are considered homeless. And I'm sorry, I do not have that number off the top. I can bring it this afternoon because we do have our point-in-time homeless count that we conduct every January. I can bring that report to you. Sorry, can't pull that one out of my head right at the moment.
All right, some of the areas that you talked about were transportation, housing, mental and dental care, or medical and dental care, I should say, childcare. The youth center is opening a new childcare center. I don't know when it's going to open, but it's going to open. We passed a bill, or we passed a resolution, actually, for housing. And I, I don't know, I don't know when that's going to start, but it's, I think it's going to, our apartments are going to start in the spring. So I don't know, we're moving on some of these things anyway.
Shannon Ernst, absolutely. And that's where, you know, we talk about, these have been identified, but a lot of these, when we went through the prioritization of them, we had a discussion. These things have happened. You don't see the effects today, but this could be a one-year, two-year, three-year, five-year impact we see. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I have the worst frog today in my throat. So looking at that, as we build the strategic plan, it may be not directly, social services is going to build housing, but it can reflect that the county did a resolution and is working with partners to bring housing, which then ultimately increases that movement of individuals out of our low-income apartments into other housing that would meet their needs and they could afford, which then opens up that low income. And we had a very in-depth conversation about this when we, during one of the leadership ones. We've talked about the childcare, and something, you know, we find the affordability of childcare is a concern. We have also the care program. We have some fun, it's an amazing program, but some people cannot afford that. So where do they go? So one of the thoughts is we, County Manager Barbie and I met with Director Whitley at the state. How about being Medicaid-eligible, because there is availability through Medicaid to pay for some childcare? And so currently, I'm waiting for a quote to help all of Churchill County become Medicaid-eligible. That's on my list this afternoon also. So any of these pockets, such as JPO, social services, we have billable things so we can be reimbursed, which opens up more access for individuals. So we have a lot in the works. It's not today, it may not be the next year, but we are putting those in the timelines for those outcomes. I feel like we're working on a lot, you just don't see a lot of quick results with these. They take a lot of time.
Any other questions? Miles, do you have anything?
No.
Speaking with Captain Tanner, this was probably three months ago. It was right after we had passed the bill or the measure to actually, we overrid, we did an override of the Planning Commission. And there were a lot of very angry people, a lot of angry people. But Captain Tanner said, "I really appreciate you doing that." He says, "Because we have about 20%, of our people who are employed at the base live someplace else." And I said, "Do you really think they'll come back to Fallon?" And he says, "Yeah, I do, I really do." He says, "There's two reasons. One is because of the commute." That's a logical, the other one is, we have a community here. And I mentioned this to the mayor yesterday, because of the tree lighting and everything. We have a community here, and it's not something that some of the other communities have. And so I really do believe that a lot of, that once the housing is prepared, that a lot of these people will come back here. He said he was building, they will build another segment of housing out there at the base, but he says, "It's not going to be enough to cover what we need." So he says, "I'm really, I really appreciate what you and the other commissioners have done to try to provide for housing." Is there anything else? Anything else? Well, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the community needs assessment as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the community needs assessment as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, consideration possible action, ratification of a sub-grant or a sub-agreement between the State and Nevada Office of Epidemiology and Churchill County Social Services for the amount of $202,560 to provide laboratory services and maintain testing. Shannon?
Again, for the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. We have been awarded this $202,000 to support overall the laboratory that we have here in Churchill County. It is under a satellite from UNR Public Lab in Reno. This will pay the salaries for the laboratory scientist, the laboratory technician, some accounting, and then actually a portion of my salary, 5% of my salary to oversee the lab. One of the things is there is additional costs that we've had to maintain it, such as data loggers certifications, and they have funded that at this time. So today, I ask that you approve the ratification so we can maintain the lab. Any questions?
Any questions for Shannon? How long has this office been open? Maybe two, two years?
We started building the lab in October of 2020, and we started processing in 2021.
Have you had fundings all of that time?
Yes, the lab has been a hundred percent funded by the state, either through passus from CDC or direct state funding.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and ratify the agreement as presented.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ratif, the, and ratify the agreement as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Again, thank you. Thanks, Shannon. All right, consideration poss, and possible action, approval of an interlocal contract between Churchill County and the State of Nevada Department of Health Human Services Division of Child and Family Services for reimbursement of costs associated with strangulation, forensic medical examinations for victims of domestic violence pursuant to Assembly Bill 257.
Again, for the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. So the counties are responsible to pay for victims of crime costs, such as forensic exams and some counseling and other expenses. That has been going on for years. We pay the first thousand, and then it goes to the state for additional fees. This year, during legislation, AB, AB 257 passed, which now is separated for strangulation of domestic violence. Approximately a hundred twenty cases per month statewide are reported for strangulation in the state of Nevada. So that's why this bill go, went forward. But within that bill, it also gave an appropriation of just over a million dollars to help offset the county's cost to this for the next two years. So this agreement would allow us to bill the camp, the state for any costs we incur. A big piece of this is also to develop data. So when I reached out to the state and said, "How many are here in Churchill County?", there's no information, just countywide, that has been collected. It's just statewide. So we will be reporting every month, every case we receive, and if we don't receive a case, we have to put in a no, no case received report. So I asked today that we do enter into this agreement, so that we can be reimbursed for these costs to build the data collection and also provide this service.
Any questions for Shannon?
Shannon, do you break that down between Churchill County and Lyon County when they're brought here to the hospital?
Yes. So we have to break everything down based off the county, and it's kind of, it can be a struggle at times with Lyon County because of the Hazen area, but we actually have a map that shows where the addresses are. So anything that comes in, even the opioid overdoses that come in, they break it down by residence address. And so this would be the same way.
Do you see strangulation as an issue with domestic violence?
So because of the victims of crime in the cases that we receive, it does not tell us the exact data of the case. So I cannot answer that. This actually will help us understand more of the cases that we are receiving.
I'll just say, we get these cases on a relatively routine basis. I, I don't wanna say too often, but they do happen, and it will be very beneficial to at least the prosecution of the cases to have an examination done and a doctor actually look at them.
Does the team come down here, or do we have to take them up to Reno?
So they currently have to go to Reno. That has not changed. I think it's been about fifteen years they've had to go to Reno for these. And so one of the things to our victims of crime is we can help pay for transportation costs. So what happens, just to kinda give you an idea why I don't have a lot of this data, is a case goes to law enforcement. Law enforcement provides a referral directly to social services, and it might be anonymous name just with an address, especially when we get into youth and those things. We do not ask at this time for any information about the case. We just wanna know, verified, that it is a case. So we have, I've spoken with Jeff Weed at the District Attorney's Office. I think our referral form is going to change and just have a checkmark that it is strangulation. So as soon as it goes to that one, we will monitor these different. So it'll be victims of crime and then strangulation. One of the things is, our office deals with a lot of different items, and so we do not wanna know the details of some of these cases. And we may be working with these individuals on something else.
You don't want to know the details?
I do not wanna know the, to deal, details of child victims and things of that sort. It can cause more harm to staff and how you deal within the work face, place. And it's not necessary for any of our cases for us to know those details. We used to receive pictures, the full case report. That is not necessary for us to provide this service. We just know that the law enforcement has approved it as a true victims of crime or a strangulation. So the less information provided on these.
So does the sheriff's office know?
Yes. They're investigating.
And the DA's office knows?
Yes.
Okay.
Social services done does not need to know the pieces.
Shannon, for children, are you a mandatory reporter?
Yes, we are. We are, and that's, you know, there's times it's very confusing. State of Nevada is one of the only ones that are, where DCFS, Child Protective Services, is not within the county. Within the state of Nevada, that is handled through interlocal agreement with the state, and it's only Washoe and Clark that handles those directly. So we will receive anonymous letters, photos, those things, so we take them to the proper authority to handle those cases, but then we also provide it to DCFS.
Sheriff?
Richard Hickox, Churchill County Sheriff, for the record. I wanted to add on just one little piece of clarification information to what Shannon was talking about. So when this bill was being pushed through, we were concerned, not because of the extra care that would be given, but we were concerned because there's very limited resources for doing these forensic examinations for people with strangulation. And so we reached out to our local hospital and asked if they would be pursuing any kind of program to get their people certified. They said that that was not on their agenda at this time. And they did not have anybody that was certified. So the only place right now that we have as law enforcement is in Reno, and so we either transport the victims up ourselves, we provide them with fuel, and then meet them up there, or else they just will drive up there and we'll meet them there. That's the way that they get to, to Reno. We've taken them down and put fuel in their car, so that they can get up if they don't feel comfortable riding with us. They wanna ride with a family member, if they don't have gas money, we'll fuel up their car, lease it up, to get them up there and back home. And we'll take them up there, or else we'll put them in our car.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the interlocal contract as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the interlocal contract as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Consideration possible action, ratification of an agreement between Churchill County Social Services and the Nevada State Housing Division for Welfare Set Aside funding in the amount of twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents for FY '24.
Again, for the record, Shannon Ernst, Churchill County Social Services. Annually, Churchill County receives funding, which is for the Welfare Set Aside Fund. Is what this is, it comes from the real estate transfer tax. So when a home is purchased, there's that tax, and it goes into a fund to support a six, median income people below sixty percent. Previous to fiscal, this fiscal year '24, it was an automatic allocation. So in fiscal year '23, we apply, we didn't have to apply. We just said, "Yes, we want to receive the funds," and we received eighty-eight-hundred dollars. This year, we had to actually do a competitive application, and that was approved for the twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. This will offset costs to pay for individuals to receive utility and rental assistance to avoid eviction or homelessness. Any questions I can answer?
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and ratify the agreement as presented.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ratification of the agreement as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you. Consideration possible action, approval of a interlocal contract between the State of Nevada Health and Human Services Division of Health and Care Finance and Policy for the Medicaid Match Program not to exceed one-million-five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nine dollars and fifteen cents, or eight cents per one hundred assessed per NRS 428, 285 through July first, 2023, to June thirtieth, 2027. Shannon?
I promise, this is the last one. For the record, Shannon Ernst. So every legislative session, it goes through with our Medicaid Match. What this does is it provides the non-federal share for Medicaid for our long-term care and waiver programs for individuals that are disabled or elderly. This is a tax revenue that comes in. We have our indigent medical program that is assessed. So that's why it is that eight cents. Currently, we're just a little bit over six cents that we are assessing the county residents. So there is a big change with this. Previously, it went on the biennium for legislative sessions, and now they've extended it to go for four years. So it'd be the two legislatures. So we have to agree as a state to enter into this agreement. So Clark's agreement must look exactly like Churchill's agreement, and so that's why there has been a delay. Because there was a change in the language for the four years, one, and also, we will not make a prepayment for the July. The state kept billing us to prepay July, which at the end of the year caused mass confusion because we had had an overpayment, underpayment, so you had recaptures and things of that sort. So that language has been removed. And so today, I ask that we do enter into this agreement as required to participate in the program.
Any questions for Shannon? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the contract as presented, and authorize the chair to sign the same.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented, and to authorize the chair to sign the same agreement. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody wanna pull any letters out that the county has received? Seeing none, we will adjourn to go to the liquor board meeting. Do I need to adjourn?
I move to adjourn this meeting and move to liquor board.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to move to the liquor board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Just enough time for the sheriff to come up to the microphone again. All right, we'll start with public comment. Any public comment? Verification and posting them to the agenda?
Pam Moore for the record. The agenda was posted on November twenty-ninth between the hours of eight and nine at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
The approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda submitted.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Adoption of the minutes from October fifth?
I move to adopt the minutes of the meeting held on October fifth, 2023.
Second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of October fifth, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we'll go on to appointments. Approval of the special events liquor license for Chad Denton for the Top Gun Invitational Bull Riding Event scheduled at the Rafter III-C Event, Event Center on December thirty-first, 2023. Sheriff?
Sheriff Richard Hickox, for the record. Per NRS and county code, I did a, the background that's required, and I found nothing that would exclude him from holding a liquor license, and therefore, I would recommend to this board that they go ahead and approve this special event liquor license, so that he can provide liquor at this event.
Okay, thanks, Sheriff. Any questions or anybody? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve a special events liquor license for Chad Denton for the Top Gun Invitational Bull Riding Event to be held at the Rafter III-C Event Center on December thirty-first, 2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the liquor license for Chad Denton for the Top Gun Invitational Bull Riding Event scheduled for December thirty-first, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll go for our final public comment. And we will adjourn. That didn't take long. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, we'll go on to new business. Consideration possible action, approval of a proposed, proposals from Logistical for new host servers for the administration building, CHNAS one storage, in the amount of eighteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, and the sheriff's office EXS host server in the amount of eleven-thousand-one-hundred-and-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Julie?
Good morning, Chair Charman and members of the commission, Julie Guerrero for the record. What you have before you are two different proposals to handle the replacement of two physical servers that are part of the county's infrastructure. One of them is located here at the administration building, which we, we refer to as the CHNAS, which is a storage device that many of the county employees have access to as there's files and file servers that are located on that storage device, as well as a server located at the sheriff's office that we refer to as the EXS host. So these two proposals that are attached outline the, the work to replace the actual physical servers themselves, so the hardware and the labor involved in migrating the data, and, and some of the licensing. But I will say that the bulk of the licensing was incorporated into the main county infrastructure refresh project, which is on our next agenda item. So to keep things pretty clear-cut, these two proposals are, are for, specifically for these pieces of hardware and the work that goes into replacing them. We did present these infrastructure items during preparation of the fiscal year '24 budget. So they were on the list slated for replacement when we approached the commission regarding approval of the data processing budget. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Julie?
Have you seen improvement with Logically now, before we give them this contract?
We, we have. I mean, no relationship with any one vendor is going to be perfect a hundred percent of the time.
We were having major problems with them.
We were having some very significant issues with them for quite some time, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you that everything's always great.
I've seen their van out here, so it looks like they may be doing something.
They're, with having Colin on board, and Colin's in the audience here, so he's the county's first IT professional. I mean, we had Tony for a short while, and unfortunately, he passed. But with, with Colin's background and able to interface on a daily basis with Logically, it's still obviously necessary to have either a hybrid environment or a full-blown county IT that would involve a lot more employees. But for, for right now, as we had discussed during budget development, when we had originally requested the position, that it was kind of, you know, crawl before you walk, baby steps by having a hybrid situation, because we do have departments that require twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five support, like our sheriff's office and our juvenile probation, and as well as work on weekends from other departments, like the courts and the district attorney. from other departments, like the courts and the district attorney's office and things of that nature. So we have to have coverage every day of the year and every hour of the day. So having Logically provide, you know, help desk support, as well as they are a nationwide company, so there are some benefits there with regard to their resources and the number of sort of higher-level IT professionals, because you have your kind of entry-level help desk, support people, but all the way up through, you know, advanced level computer engineers, people that design networks and systems, people that are specialized in licensing. So there's definitely some benefit there. We are still going to be exploring options on service providers in the future and bringing that forward for discussion. But for right now, the county also has some major infrastructure refresh to work on, and so it would not be prudent to be trying to work with somebody unfamiliar with our environments on some of these, although we did request that two other companies look at some of this work, and they declined to quote.
Right. We just don't want to end up with Sheriff having to put his router on the outside of his door again.
Right.
So, because that's the same company, I think it was, that did that before. They never helped him out. So we just don't want to get into the same place we were before. But if they're better now...
Right. I think especially having Colin here to oversee and that being his...
Yeah, we just got to hold him accountable, which it sounds like he is doing now.
Yes, yes.
Because the door's shut now at the Sheriff's Office.
Any other questions for Julie? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposals from Logically for the servers' replacement of the CNASH at the County Administration Building and the ESX host at the Sheriff's Office, and authorize the county manager to execute the proposal.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposal of Logically. Let's get that right. Logically. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Consideration Possible Action: Approval of the Proposal from Logically for Churchill County IT Infrastructure Refresh, including several host servers, storage devices, and Microsoft licensing, in the amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand and one hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents.
Again, Julie Guerrero for the record. So this proposal would represent the bulk of all the infrastructure work for the county, and I'm talking about countywide, not just this building. I mean, we're talking about district attorney, courts, sheriff, headquarters. Basically, everyone's being touched in one way or another by this project. So included in this proposal are the remaining pieces of hardware that have been identified that need to be replaced, and I do want to also let you know that all of the county's hardware has exceeded sort of useful life or industry standards by far, by far in a way. So I feel confident in communicating with you that we have sort of gotten our money's worth out of these things. And then you start getting into a situation where it's risky that you're using these old pieces of software, as well as we have to update the operating systems that are running on, to Microsoft Server 2022, because these are running Microsoft Server 2012. And it is not an easy thing. It's not the same as updating your home PC from operating system with the Windows. That's fairly simplistic. Doing that with servers is a whole lot more detailed and requires some advanced-level engineers working on those kind of updates. So what's included in this proposal is hardware, labor, and licensing. It would be for replacing the host server, the physical box server that is located in the admin building, which we call the CHD CO2 server. The Altera, which is a thirty-terabyte storage device that will replace our Nimble storage device, which is located in county admin's server room and is the county's primary storage device. We have two HPE ProLiant Gen X servers that will consolidate and replace three of our existing servers. So we try to look for efficiencies wherever we could find them. So we're taking three existing servers known as the ESX one, two, and three, and consolidating them into two servers. We also have the host server at juvenile probation and the host server at the road department, as well as cabling. So the total hardware cost to replace all of those various different servers is a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents for the hardware. On top of that would be the licensing that we have to purchase through Microsoft for the physical servers, and then several of these servers have what's referred to as VMs or virtual machines running on them, which are kind of like additional servers hosting other people's applications and programs and things like that. So we may have a physical server that has multiple virtual machines running on it, like the Votech and the ORN that runs like the accounting stuff, and those are all running on individual virtual machines. Each one of those virtual machines also has to have their operating system updated. So the licensing is fairly significant, and the licensing for the servers would be ninety-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and also includes user CAL licensing, which are licenses that allow the individual users to access certain data on systems that live on those servers. And then the labor is estimated at approximately two hundred and forty-six hours, and is quoted along with this, as well as the project coordination fee. So in total, two hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents is a tremendous amount of work. Our goal was to complete this in fiscal year twenty-four and be done by the spring, and so that's still the target, is to get these physical pieces of hardware ordered. Each project, as we move forward, is going to be coordinated closely with the affected departments. A lot of the work will be done after hours, early morning, late night, weekends, to avoid disruptions to those departments and minimize any kind of downtime. So that's, in a nutshell, what it is. We're refreshing the county's IT infrastructure, and if you have any questions on these projects, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Julie? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposal from Logically for the Churchill County IT Infrastructure Refresh and authorize the county manager to execute the proposal.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposal from Logically for the Churchill County IT Infrastructure Refresher and authorize the county manager to execute the proposal. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to Consideration Possible Action: Review of the Opioid Litigation Settlements, Projected Payment Timelines, and Restrictions on the Settlement Refresher. I assume, Joe, you...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford, for the record. The board had asked for a little update regarding the opioid litigation funds, how much money we were actually receiving, and when potentially it was coming in. And so I have a spreadsheet up on the screen here that shows who's going to be paying, how much they'll be paying, and estimated time on when they'll be paying. It has been roughly within a six-month period of that date, I'd say, is a more accurate date. Some payers are better than others, and some of it also is a delay. Excuse me. There's a delay where the settlement payers will have paid the state through the One Nevada Agreement, and then it will take time for them to actually get us the money. And so at this time, we've received the initial distributions. Everything up to the September of two thousand and twenty-three, payment schedules have actually been paid. We just received the second distribution from McKesson a couple of days ago, and so we are receiving these as expected. If you scroll down to the bottom, you'll see our total expected collection is slightly over three million dollars. The majority of that will be done by two thousand and thirty-five, with Teva as the settler who pushed it to two thousand and forty-two for their final settlements. But the majority of money will be coming in in the next ten to twelve years. Now, the screen makes it very difficult to understand this next slide, but there are some restrictions on how the money is going to be used. Now, this is something that we're working with the state and with the settlement people as well on what exactly is acceptable. The vast majority of the settlement money is going to allow any, pretty much any use that's listed. It could be treatment. It could be prevention. It could be some of our core programs, like services in the jails and things like that, that would help prevent reoffense. Some of the settlers did have some restrictions that overlap and may not include some of those, and so that's part of what's being done with our work through the state and through the consulting agreement, is going to be identifying, in particular, what services can be done and getting buy-off on all of the parties that money spent to those services will not have any adverse effects. There is some discussion as to, at least from the state, that we should consider separating all of these received funds into separate accounts. I'll talk with Sherry about that. Until we actually receive orders that we have to do that, I think that's not our preference. But we may end up having to do something as it relates to the American drugstores and Teva folks who have substantially different language. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Joe?
Joe, with the Purdue bankruptcy going on right now for that July twenty-twenty-four payment that's over two hundred thousand, is it going to have an effect on that?
It may have an effect on that. We've had, the Malin-Crop bankruptcy has also delayed receiving of funds. For the most part, the expectation is that we will continue to receive the actual amount, but it may cause a delay in actually getting those funds.
Any other questions, comments?
Thanks, Jill. Appreciate it. We'll move on. No action required on that one. Consideration Possible Action: Approval of a Deed of Correction for Property Located at seven-three-three-nine Pasture Road, APN zero-zero-six-zero-eight-one-zero-three, and owned by Silver Creek Farms, LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, Joe Sanford, for the record. This is an action made at the request of the owner of the property. The, I guess, the sum facts of it are, this property is a hundred and twenty-three acres, and when we did the conservation easement, we split it into twelve dry acres and a hundred and eleven point two farming acres. There were a hundred and eleven point two irrigated acres at that time, and they have been using it for that purpose the entire time. The confusion arose because there are six additional acres of water associated with the property that cannot be used under the configuration that we adopted when we did this conservation easement. And so the deed references those extra acres, but it's unclear whether they were actually part of the transfer or not. So I worked through this with Julie and some of our other folks, and looking at our TDR worksheet, and as well as the content in the deed, and the fact that it wouldn't actually have any use on this property, it became clear that those six acres were never meant to be used as part of this conservation easement, and so our request and the correction deed is to show that this six acres was never included, and they are free to move it as they wish. It will leave the remaining one hundred and eleven point two acres still under conservation and still being used exactly as it was when placed into the program.
Any questions for Jill?
And you said the homeowner's okay with this? They're the ones that brought it to you?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and direct the chair to sign the corrective deed for property located at seven-three-three-nine Pasture Road.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve and direct the chair to sign the corrective deed for property located at seven-three-three-nine Pasture Road. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Consideration Possible Action: Representation Agreement from Joel W. Locke Esquire of Allison McKenzie, LLC, to represent Churchill County in connection with Indigent Defense Services Review, billed at an hourly rate of three hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for attorney time, a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for law clerk time, and a hundred dollars an hour for paralegal time. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie for the record, actually. I'll be presenting this one. You are, should be familiar with Joel Locke. He was our representative, working with us on negotiations with our deputy sheriff's contract component, and he's also worked in representing the commission in negotiations with CCCOM. We just recently, as you're aware, over the last five, six years, we've been working with the Indigent Defense Board in establishing our public defenders' offices and trying to comply with the different statutes and then rule-making practices that the Indigent Defense Board has brought forward. In that time, they've been talking significantly about a report that they've been preparing, that we've been waiting on and waiting on and waiting on, that was going to address caseload, caseload hours, and then have a configuration of that that would basically identify the number of public defenders that were necessary for the caseloads that we have here in Churchill County. As you're aware, we currently have two public defenders. We were already working on and looking at bringing forward a request for a third public defender that would, in our mind, kind of finalize the needs that we have. In the meantime, the Indigent Defense Board came forward and sent us their completed report and a recommendation that the county needs an additional seven, or was it total? Total of seven public defenders, a little over seven, seven point four, seven and a half, which came as quite a thud on my desk. And so you've also been aware that they've pushed back that the district attorney's office is conflicted in advising us on some of these matters, and that's been a frustration that I've voiced over the last couple of years to you. So to address that and recognizing that we think, and I'll just say it as clearly as I can, and hopefully they review the tapes from this meeting, is ridiculous. And so we want to bring Joel on board to help us as we review the rules that they're making, the way that they are suggesting we staff the public defenders' office, so on and so forth. So that's why this is coming forward. This releases any suggestion of conflict by the district attorney's office. And we've obviously talked to the District Attorney's Office before bringing forward this request and this contract. So I would ask that you approve this. And it's like a retainer, it would be as we use, as we go. So we don't know what that use is just going to be, but we we want to we want to be well represented as we start to push back on some of this.
Any questions for Jim?
I'd just like to say thank you for not bringing him here today. But this is just to represent us at the state level?
Yes, to represent us at the state level and then consult with me on actions that then if we take actions or how we respond to their... They basically sent in a letter form, please let us know when you're going to hire these additional four and a half and...
But it's not a lobby.
No, this is not a lobby. He's legally representing us in lieu of the District Attorney's Office, who is deemed to be conflicted. Right. It's a mandate, and I don't believe they have the authority to mandate.
There's not even that many lawyers in town, isn't there?
Shenanigans, what a joke.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the representation agreement from Joel Locke and authorize the county manager to execute.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the representation agreement from Joel Locke and authorize the county manager to execute. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye? Unanimous, thank you. We'll go on to consent items. Does anybody want to pull anything out for consent from the consent agenda? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as listed. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye? All right. Future agenda items, anything? Commissioner and manager staff reports. After our last meeting, I I attended the Carson Water Subconservancy District Meeting in Carson City. Interesting meeting, but it's mainly Douglas and Carson City and Lyon County. I throw a few things in there, but I'm not appreciated much. Also, I attended the NACO meeting on Friday, a week, a couple of weeks ago. And I had breakfast with the mayor yesterday and Bob Erickson and Jim. Other than that, I I did miss the library board meeting and the CEDA meeting. I will try to get back to those next month, or this month. Justin?
I attended a cartboard meeting yesterday and also last week had a museum meeting. And just with that water group, is it because we have TCID that they don't respect you as much?
They might not.
That's probably since they're their own kind of entity, I think.
Miles?
I have nothing this month for this meeting.
Jim?
Nothing to report, help us get on schedule, back on schedule. Just look forward to seeing everybody Friday evening for the employee appreciation dinner.
Except you had a great trip to Scotland. Sherri?
Just wanted to let you know that the audit was completed on time. We're just wrapping it up and will be presented at the next commissioner's meeting if it's approved by the audit committee. Thank you.
Joe?
Looking forward to prime rib.
Linda, you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to introduce you to our newest team member in my office. This is Julianne Iconon.
Hello.
You will see her at the meetings with Pam, and she's just cross-training, and she will be, you know, an asset here as well. Other than that, we've mailed out quite a bit of voter notifications, sixteen, over sixteen thousand to all the active voters. It's an information sheet and just gearing up for making sure everybody's registered, their parties are right, and so on and so forth. We have, we will be mailing out a courtesy delinquent letter for property taxes probably by the end of the week, and that's about thirteen hundred taxpayers.
Oh, what deadline is for tomorrow? Is it for your denying a mail-in ballot?
Yeah, opt-out to get a mail ballot.
Pam, did you have anything?
I don't have anything related to work, but I wanted to let you know that Fallon's being represented by the Fallon Pop Warner Cheerleaders at a national level today. I watched my granddaughter...
Are they really?
Yeah, I watched my granddaughter perform this morning at about six forty, so it was pretty cool. We'll see how they do.
Where are they at?
They're in Orlando. So they won here at State in Reno, and then they went on to California for the regional competition, and they won there, so now they're at Nationals.
That's really something. That's that's neat. Sheriff, can you beat that?
I was a little surprised we weren't in a kilt this morning. Later, okay. Friday, all right. So the Ford truck that we had purchased earlier finally arrived. It was not the crushed one, so they did fully replace it, although when we got it, the doors don't lock, so we're going to have to work with Ford to figure out how to make the doors lock. But we got it, and everything else is fine on it. We're just getting our parts in through the mail so we can finish getting that outfitted, and then we'll have a couple more vehicles to go before Jim and Nick for approval or redistribution within the county. And those will be two thousand and thirteen Tahos.
Did you get the lights on it?
What's that?
Are the lights on it?
Yeah, lights are on it. They actually redid the, how they put the lights on the running bars. It's a much more secure setup this time. And so everything is there, minus the radio and our boosters for our for our radios and that kind of thing. So we we have the antenna, as he just arrived. Now he's got to schedule it with Wash, or with Sierra Electronics so we can get that installed and programmed. So we're happy about that. In keeping with the technology theme, earlier this year, we had Motorola come in and do a keep, or end of the year, or end of life kind of phase thing with some of the equipment that we had. They recommended a couple of pieces be replaced, and so we were working on with Logically and with Motorola to get some of those done. We think we have, getting narrowed down to a couple of switches that we can get replaced this year. But we did meet with the phone company because our phones are purchased in two thousand and sixteen. That was what I was told. Installed in two thousand and seventeen. But there's some stuff with our phone system that does not currently, is not currently compatible with our voice recorder. So we don't, we're not able to use all of the functions of it. And so there's a few other things that we're purchasing because this board approved us to, or looking at to purchase. This board approved us to upgrade to next-gen nine-one-one, and so we've been working with them to try and figure out exactly what that looks like. Due to some turnover and whatever within Motorola, we haven't been able to make the progress that I want. And so we kind of really started hammering down on that, saying we have to make progress on that. So we met this week twice, actually, with Motorola and with our phone company to try and narrow some of that down. And I think we actually made some progress on that. But they're supposed to come by and do an end-of-life or assessment kind of of the stuff that we have so we can, we know what we need to to look at to replace. We want to take a step back in time and, but make an improvement, if that makes any sense. Years ago, there was a program called the Fender Watch that was paid for under a grant for the entire state. We utilized it briefly, but not near its full extent. And then it just kind of languished because some people didn't like it. And I liked it, but I didn't have the authority to make it happen. So now that's changed. The program is revitalized, and it's been paid for partially by a grant and by the Nevada sheriffs and chiefs. The program is called the Fender Watch. What it is, is a database for sex offenders that we can track. It's it's highly searchable. So if we have a known sex offender that registers with us, we can take photos of their tattoos. We can take photos of their cars, and can upload it to the system. The system is searchable only by law enforcement, so the public can't see all of those features. However, if we have a person that's lurking in the neighborhood that is called in by a parent that says, hey, this person's kind of suspicious or kind of creepy, we can identify who it is. We can take any of that information that they provide us as far as the vehicle description, their description, and plug it into that and search that database as well as our other database. The cool thing about this is it is in all the counties except ours and in thirty-plus states around the nation. And so the database becomes very large. If we have a sex offender that goes non-compliant here in our county, we can search that information within those, that database and find out if they've moved to another county or another state. And so I I am very excited about getting this program back in place. I've been talking to this company for over a year, trying to get it back in into our county, and we met with them, and so I'll have to work with Colin and with Preston to get some of the GIS information and then a little bit of the tech stuff. But there's no cost to the county as far as for this program. It's already been paid for by the state as well as by the Sheriff's and Chiefs Association. So I'm very happy to get that back in place. I think that'll make our community a little bit safer. Question that has been asked several times is where's our drones? They're currently in Las Vegas getting it up. Where's our drones? They are currently in Las Vegas getting a update to their software stuff. The guy that was designing them made a breakthrough on something he's been working on, and so he asked for all of them back so that he could make the update. So that's where they are. We're hoping to get them back next week. We've held, hosted several training sessions for the pilot's licenses, and we've had a couple of people take the pre-test and score high enough to where they could pass. So we feel confident sending them forward because that's not a cheap test to pay for and not to have. So we think we're making progress on that, and so we're very excited about that. Earlier this, actually, end of last month, we received an email, a blind email from a lady that I don't know, asking us for a letter of support. She wanted us to write a letter of support for a new CAC center to go into Carson City. As I was unfamiliar with her, unfamiliar with what they did, I had questions. And if anybody knows me, I always have questions. And so I started a series of questions to her. And then shortly into that question writing, I received a call from the Carson City Sheriff's Office. They advised that this person was a competing interest but had no experience with CAC centers or child sexual investigations at all. They were a resource center, which is an entirely different thing than a CAC center, and that the Carson City Sheriff's Office, along with several private funders in Carson City area, had been working to create a CAC center since about January of this year. For those unfamiliar with the CAC center, it's a child advocacy center. It's a center where they have people that are forensically, are trained in forensic interviewing, such as what they have in Reno. They also do examinations of children if they come in after having been sexually abused. And so they have been working on it because they had a child that was presented to them, and they couldn't get into their Reno center for over a week. And so they asked about it. And what was currently going on is in the Reno center, which, love Debbie, she's awesome. She's very experienced in what she does, but because of the volume, the rurals are allocated basically one week a month to be able to bring their people up there if they need an interview. And so what you have is you have a child that's been presented with this life-changing incident. And if they're willing and wanting to talk, they, if they want to take them to that center, they're forced to wait almost a month sometimes to get them in to talk, which is very detrimental to that case, is detrimental to the mental health of that child. And so the one in Carson would become an alternate service. It would not be a one or the other. It would just be an alternate that would open up days so we could get those families and those kids in to get the treatment that they need. So I spoke with the representative from Carson City Sheriff's Office. His name is Craig Low. He's a, I think he's a captain at this time. Although when you talk to him, he keeps referring to himself as lieutenant or captain. And so I'm not sure he knows what his rank is, but he's a great guy. He's a guy that has helped us out tremendously with our CIT program here and a person that I have a lot of trust and faith in. And so he has founded, or has got some people to put together a foundation over there. It's helping our communities, and I'm not sure exactly how that's worded, but they have a donor who is very interested in helping children and has laid down one point three million dollars for a building. Her husband has stated that he will fund all of the tech that goes into that building out of his pocket as his donation to that foundation. They have several of their friends who have also started fundraising to keep the thing going and sustain it so that they have funding in the future. Carson City Sheriff's Office is the one that's pushing this so that they have a law enforcement knowledgeable CAC center that's there. And then they will be stepping back, and they'll have a steering committee that does include, I think, Sheriff Furlong, but is a member from their District Attorney's Office and then some members from their community. So it will not be just strictly ran by law enforcement. They are asking for us to provide letters of support or interest. I told them that I wanted to hear more from them, and so Craig did come over to our office. We hosted a meeting between him, our agency, the Fallon Police Department in Persian County. We extended it out to several other counties, as well as our local District Attorney's Office. Some agencies couldn't make it, but he did put together a presentation for us on it. And so to me, it's very interesting, and it's something that I can definitely support because it does give us options. If we have a child that has had one of the worst, if not the worst thing that could ever happen to them happen, and they need to talk to somebody, this gives us an option. We don't have to have that person wait for a month. If our detectives are unavailable or a person wants to talk to us, in the case of a special needs child, needs an even higher level of training than what we have. And so it's something that I I am excited to see come to northern Nevada as an alternate, instead of just having one. Ms. Debbie has been doing this job for a long, long time and has talked about wanting to step back a little bit and head for retirement. And so it's something that I think is is a good thing. I did talk to them about in the future potentially making a satellite office here in in Churchill County. And they said that they were interested in that, so that's down the road.
So were you providing the letter of support for the lady or not?
No, they just took my verbal.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not supporting the Ron Woods group just because in reading through their proposal, they do not mention sexual abuse. They said that they're there to prevent sexual abuse. But by the time that kid's already there to get the examination, it's already happened. And they don't have any expertise in dealing with that. And as a resource center, that's a slight, that's a whole different ballgame from a CAC center. And so I'm more in favor with the other one. Any questions about that?
No. Any questions for the sheriff?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll go our last, what, what, Jim? I won't, I won't. Jim will take it. Andy, you have anything? All right, our last public comment saying no public. Boy, we did, we did empty this room, didn't we? Well, we will, we'll adjourn now for our tours. Start with the assessors.